On our public participation is Sam Chamberlain. Are you there, Sam?
I am, but I'm gonna defer comments to the next meeting. Thank you.
I didn't hear that. Did anyone?
City is going to defer comments to the next meeting.
The next meeting. Okay, Sam, thank you very much. Ryan White, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Ryan, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'm Ryan White. I am another alumnus of this Innovation Lab. There's an ancient Greek myth about a robber named Procrassus. He would convince his victims to lie down on an iron bed. If the victim were too short for the bed, he would stretch them out to fit it. And if the victim was too long, he would cut off their feet to make them fit. My freshman year of high school, I found myself lying on the iron bed, Procrassus leaning over me with a bone saw. My love of learning was fading due to the monotony of the traditional school system. I accepted my fate to be a B or C student and started treating school like a system to be taken advantage of instead of a place of learning. My sophomore year, this Innovation Lab opened up and it reinvigorated my dormant love for learning. I was able to pursue the standards required by the state at my own pace and in my own style. In American history, a subject I found particularly uninteresting, I had the privilege of working with some of my closest friends to create YouTube videos about American history. This was a lot more work than simply studying for tests and doing homework, but because I was interested in what I was doing, I finished the curriculum and had fun. Another thing this Innovation Lab encourages is depth of learning. So using the example of making YouTube videos, writing accurate, concise, and interesting scripts for the videos required mastery and complete understanding of the material at hand. Retaking tests, okay, well, retaking isn't an accurate way of describing it. Being tested on the same material until mastery is shown ensures that students understand the concepts that they're supposed to learn. The SIN Lab demands that students prove that they understand what they're being taught instead of giving students a failing grade and moving on without patching up the holes in their learning. There are so many other things this Innovation Lab taught me. Time management by having unstructured days, leadership by having a student government that actually made changes, and how to communicate and collaborate with peers via many group projects. All of these things are essential skills for college and the professional workplace, and they're all subjects that traditional schooling often fails to teach. Our current method of schooling may be good enough to get the job done, but we can do better. Sycamore is pioneering education, and the choice to relinquish the reins and return to standard form is unthinkable to me. Without this Innovation Lab, I would be another cookie cutter computer science major, set on a career path maybe, but ultimately unhappy with myself. Please reconsider taking this privilege away from students. Let them choose their own bed instead of cutting them off at the ankles. Thank you for your time.
Ryan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Oh, your fan's moving. Excellent, okay. All right, Ryan, sorry about the technical issues. Let's try it one more time. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, did you not catch any of that? Sorry. Okay. So I'm Ryan. I'm another alumnus of this Innovation Lab, and I'm going to be speaking about my experience. So there's an ancient Greek myth about a robber named Procrassus. He would convince his victims to lie down on an iron bed. If the victim were too short for the bed, he would stretch them out to fit it. And if the victim were too long for the bed, he would cut off their feet to make them fit. My freshman year of high school, I found myself lying on the iron bed, Procrassus leaning over me with a bone saw. My love of learning was fading due to the monotony of the traditional school system. I had accepted my fate to be a B or C student and started treating school like a system to be taken advantage of instead of a place of learning. My sophomore year, this Innovation Lab opened up, and it reinvigorated my dormant love for-
You know, so like kind of-
Home stuff is for home.
Home stuff is for home. Yeah. That we don't use it enough, that it's not part of our curriculum.
Yeah, so, because I mean, literally, once a week, I give it, say that, or once or twice a week.
Amy, you're muted. You're unmuted.
Sorry, Ryan, go ahead, please.
Okay. "I was able to pursue the standards required by the state at my own pace and in my own style. In American history, a subject I found particularly uninteresting, I had the privilege of working with some of my closest friends to create YouTube videos about American history. This was a lot more work than simply studying for tests and doing homework, but because I was interested in what I was doing, I finished the curriculum and had fun."
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we start over? Because I honestly, you know, everything you said, and I think you're just starting to come in loud.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. I'll start over.
So can we, can we, can we give them time back?
Absolutely, we can. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
It's all right. Don't worry, I understand.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You guys caught the part about me being an alumnus, right, of the SIN Lab?
Yes.
Okay. So there's an ancient Greek myth about a robber named Procrassus. He would convince his victims to lie down on an iron bed. If the victim were too short for the bed, he would stretch them out to fit it. And if the victim were too long for the bed, he would cut off their feet to make them fit. My freshman year of high school, I found myself lying on that iron bed, Procrassus leaning over me with a bone saw. My love of learning was fading due to the monotony of the traditional school system. I had accepted my fate to be a B or C student and started treating school like a system to be taken advantage of instead of a place of learning. My sophomore year, this Innovation Lab opened up, and it reinvigorated my dormant love for learning. I was able to pursue the standards required by the state at my own pace and in my own style. In American history, for example, a subject I found particularly uninteresting, I had the privilege of working with some of my closest friends to create YouTube videos about American history. This was so much more work than simply studying for tests and doing homework, but because I was interested in what I was doing, I finished the curriculum and had fun. Another thing this Innovation Lab encourages is depth of learning. Using the example of making YouTube videos, writing accurate, concise, and interesting scripts for the videos required mastery and complete understanding of the material at hand. Retaking tests, okay, so retaking isn't an accurate way of describing it. Being tested on the same material until mastery is shown encouraged, sorry, ensures that students understand the concepts that they are supposed to learn. The SIN Innovation Lab demands that students prove that they understand what they're being taught instead of giving students a failing grade and moving on without patching up the holes in their learning. There are so many other things this Innovation Lab taught me. Time management by having unstructured days, leadership by having a student government that actually made changes, and how to collaborate and communicate with peers via many group projects. All of these things are essential skills for college and the professional workspace, and they're all subjects that traditional schooling often fails to teach. The traditional method of schooling may be good enough for students, but we can do better. Sycamore is pioneering education, and the choice to relinquish the reins and return to standard form is unthinkable to me. Without this Innovation Lab, I would be another cookie cutter computer science major, set on a career path maybe, but ultimately unhappy with myself. Please reconsider taking this privilege away from students. Let them choose their own bed instead of cutting them off at the ankles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you so much, and good luck in college. We didn't hear where you are. Are you, are you local, or where are you now?
I'm going to the University of Denver. I'm gonna study music recording and production.
Ah, that sounds very exciting. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too.
All right, Mrs. Swaber, do we have any other public participation? I think not. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's agenda. Mr. Lewis.
So as always, we are always excited to get an update on our building projects and extremely thankful to Mr. Lovell, Mr. Foster, all the maintenance and custodial staff, our construction teams, and specifically Mr. Fritz and his team. You know, it really teamwork makes the dream work. So if you would have seen the buildings on Saturday, I don't know that you would have been as encouraged as you were on Monday when students returned. So an amazing job by all the staff members that had to hustle and get things back together. And then, you know, as you are aware, we experienced a flood from construction at the high school. So again, our team jumped in and took care of that on Sunday night. They're pretty late to get ready for students on Monday. So Monday went off with a hitch, and so I will let Mr. Lovell go over the building projects and just give you a quick update.
Fantastic. Well, good morning, Madam President and members of the board. I'm excited to be here. And just to echo what Mr. Lewis has said, we, I just want to give a shout out to our amazing maintenance and custodial teams across the district. It was a feat among itself to get the doors open, specifically at Sims this weekend, to welcome our students and staff back for the start of the school year. Also, over at the high school. I'm actually going to just highlight those two projects this morning. We do have work, obviously, continuing at Green and the junior high, but I want to focus on Sims and the high schools since those are the ones that have projects that have kind of somewhat crossed the finish line as we start this year. So Mr. Fritz, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So let's start out and let's talk about Sims. I put together just a few pictures here in a video for you to see. If you follow me on Twitter, @AviatorBizOps, you can kind of see some of the updates, the progress going. But the success at Sims is that we got the students in the building. Were there hiccups along the way? Absolutely, there were. At the same rate, we're seeing a lot of success with the renovated spaces, smiling faces, happy teachers. A couple of things that we need to just keep our eye on as we move forward is, obviously, with the pandemic happening, there's some supply chain issues. So we've made do with some furniture items throughout the building. We've got another shipment coming in mid-September. In addition to some of our casework, so cabinets and sinks and things like that aren't completed in our new spaces. Those will be coming in later this month as well. Those things will be getting installed on the evenings and on the weekends. So we'll be working around the motion of the kids in the building with the staff. Some other highlights with Sims, I think that is important to share as well, is that in these renovated spaces that we have throughout the building, we're also working closely with our technology department. So want to make sure I give a shout out to Mr. Fritz and his team for running extremely fast this weekend, making sure that our technology was up and being able to be used. Obviously, there's hiccups with anything. Late last week, we found some issues with our provider spectrum with some fiber installation, but I just appreciate everybody's calm to get to the point on Monday as well. So as you all know, construction's continuing at Sims through December. We have work that's happening behind the scenes while the kids and teachers are in the building. We're going to be finishing up our addition to the gym, but also our additional wings. And so come December, we'll be shuffling some classes, and then we'll have that final, we'll have that final kind of showing of the space come January 1st. Last bit of information about Sims that I do want to share is that we will be excited to be dedicating that early childhood wing on October 5th to Ann. And so more information for it to come on that one, but we will let you know that we're going to be taking that space, dedicating it, and highlighting it to the community. All right, Mr. Fritz, if you want to move on to the high school. So again, at the high school, like Mr. Lewis had mentioned, we were crossing the finish line strong there. Of course, there were some hiccups along the way. We had some flooring things we had to take care of. You can see some of the renovated spaces here on this video. I would like to say, though, again, a shout out to our custodial and our maintenance teams. Yes, we had the minor setback with the water damage and the flood. We're working with the contractors on that. But I got an email as of this morning, those spaces are going to be functional again. So the hard work of that team to get in there, to get that clean, and get that ready for our students. And so we're really excited about the continuation of the renovations happening at the high school. As you know, this is just one phase of many phases, phases we're going to tackle. Take a look at this picture right here of the hub. Those classrooms are just incredible. Had the opportunity last two days to be with the flight team visiting these buildings. And I can, I think I can speak for the flight team that just absolutely amazed faces from our students to see these renovated spaces. So we're honored to be able to work towards this and provide the best learning environments for our staff and our students. So want to thank you for that. And again, like I've mentioned, construction continues at EH Green. You can see steel going up on site there. Brick and more, brick is, or I'm sorry, mortars going up as well. And then over at the junior high, we, we see structure and steel going up as well. Hot items that we have, obviously, is relocation of the transportation department. We've got to find a place to get our buses in order for the junior high complete, the junior high construction to continue to move forward, and some odds and ends there. But that's an overview of the construction. It's exciting time again. If you want to see updated pictures throughout the week, follow me at AviatorBizOps. We'll start, continue to post pictures and videos there. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Any questions from the board? They're moving along.
Just one additional comment. This is Weiss. You know, Mr. Mater and also Mrs. Ralston, you know, Mr. Tudor, Dr. Ray, they, they had to deal with a lot of logistics, you know, not only reopening their school, but specifically Mrs. Ralston and Mr. Mater, just trying to handle all of that plus, you know, this lot of shuffling that happens the last couple of days. Because they need, as you know, and I appreciate the calendar revision, because people are asking, hey, what's the calendar going to look like for next year? It's likely going to have the same feel, because we need every day we can get during the summer. And when I say every day, they were in there Sunday nights still doing things to get ready for Monday. So, you know, they were both, both principles, all four principles were great under pressure, but those two particular principles with the major renovations going on inside their buildings deserve a lot of credit for that calm that they brought to their team. So really appreciate their work.
Absolutely.
And thank you to all the building leaders to make that first day possible for all of our students. Okay, moving on to ACT data update. Mr. Lewis.
So just, I know that we would like to get into a deeper discussion about ACT data, but I thought it was important after, you know, some things that we talked about in a previous meeting, just to give you an overview of, you know, where are we with our current ACT data and trends? And one of the things that I would highlight, we have not received, and we typically receive that report late September, early October, from the actual ACT board about the next updated graduating class. So it would be about the graduating class 2021. So this is just, you know, taking a good, little bit deeper dive into our most recent data that we do have, which is from the class of 2020 and before. So just did a quick data review, looked at trends. Again, in 2018, all juniors were required to take the ACT, so you will see that impact in our data. There are district and state scores comparisons within these charts that you'll see here in a moment. And then I think it's important to point out, you will see a significant trend and a difference in the state data, but not so much in the nationwide data. Not any negligible change there. And then just some important points about the high school, how they score and look at their data trends. There are no super scoring that is used within Sycamore High School. Just look at the top ACT composite. So, you know, the best score that each student, you know, graduating student gets, that's the data that they look at for their scores. There is a college readiness score. I learned so much about this throughout the last few days of just understanding, what does that mean? Because it's different than what we would say is college bound. The college readiness score, according to our high school team, is the most recent score of the kids that they've taken. So I find that to be a strange metric for ACT in groups to track, because obviously, you would think the more a student takes a test, they would be better. But, you know, there are instances where a student takes the test, let's say, three times, and their second score was their best score. But the college readiness score that ACT tracks would be that, they would report that third score in that college readiness score. So I don't know that one is critically important to us, but it is a trend or a factor that is looked at. And then our college bound score at Sycamore High School is self-reported by students in overgrad. And that, that system is they're sending their scores to colleges to report their, the ACT score. So that's how we get our college bound ACT score. So, so here are some charts, just to kind of see where are we as a district? And what does that look like? So you can see the trend over our, the first chart, average composite scores from 2015, 2016 to, again, the graduating class of 2020. I would just highlight, you know, in that first category, there's a negative 4.7% trend. The state trend is negative 9.6. And you can really see that downward trend hit in 1718, when again, all juniors were required to start taking the test. So we took a dip and we started back up, but, you know, did a little thing called the pandemic hit. And, you know, we know we have work to do here. This is something that we're not happy with, and we would like to be back up or above the 2015, 2016 scores. So we'll talk more about that in a moment. And then you can see our college bound ACT composite scores. You know, went from 27.9. We, again, experienced a very small dip, but back up to 28.4 and 28.1. I did include this year's data from, I'll say, the unofficial data that I've got in the ACT database, but it's not through the report just yet, but-
Mr. Lewis, might I just clarify, ask a clarifying question? So when you're looking at the year, is that the graduating year? Or is that the year when they're a teenager?
So from my understanding, 2015, 2016 is their graduating year. So this would be their, the college bound ACT scores for that graduating class. So as we work down the list, you can see our most recent class again, that was data that was provided by the high school based on data they collect in overgrad. We saw a small dip this past year, but overall, the percent change of the whole list is a positive 0.8%. So I know that in our, in one of our previous meetings, Mr. Mater mentioned that there was a positive trend in our ACT scores. This was one of the only areas that there was a positive trend, and I believe that's what he was referring to, was the college bound ACT. The rest of our scores, as you'll see, I'll go through the rest. There is a minimal, Mr. Fritz, can you move that? Because it's not moving from up here. There are negative data trends throughout. So this is ACT state versus district junior mandate. You can see 2015, 2016, even 2017, there was not applicable data. But as you can see the rest of the list, our data trend again stayed fairly consistent. We had a blip up and then a drop back down for a negative 1.3% of our juniors against a negative 2.1% state of those. Those again are all the juniors, not a graduating class. This one is just based on the juniors. And then the college readiness is that score I was telling you about, that, you know, again, it's their best, most recent test or the most recent test they took. Again, that's a data point, but I don't know that it's as critical for us on that, you know, point for college readiness. There we go. And then you can just see I broke apart the five-year trends of each of the different subject matters. So you can see from 2016 to 2020 how that looked. And you can see from a school standpoint, we had a negative 5.1%. From a state, it was a negative 11.4%. In English, you can see the math score, a negative 4.7 versus a negative 8.4. Then reading and science, again, our school data, just a negative 6% negative drop over the course of the five-year period. The state was 9.4. But, you know, I think what you can, you know, clearly see from each of the charts is, you know, we had a higher score. We started testing every junior. I think we've learned a lot since testing every junior and really working with our juniors. But I think we all still see that there is work to do with our juniors to be able to make sure that they can score better and do better on the test. But I think it's a, it certainly informs us what we need to do with our students. And then, again, you can see the science scores there, just 4% negative trend for our school, but a negative 9.1% trend for the state. And then I just thought it was good to refresh from the beginning. Looking at those composite scores, you know, we saw, again, all of the average of our composite scores are a negative 4.7% trend versus the state of a negative 9.6% trend. And looking down the list again, I think that 1718 year obviously was the, it stands out for review. But, you know, talking with Mr. Mater and their team, I think they're not happy with the scores. They definitely are interested in finding ways to raise scores. And, you know, most recently, they've taken a look at working with an outside company to try to provide additional supports and opportunities for our students. So I think that's what the data is telling us, that they need to look at. Certainly, the district and state scores and trying to correct that negative trend. How can we make it go back up? You know, we saw that significant change in 2018. We did have a small positive trend in that college bound score. So that certainly tells us that we are doing some good work in that area, but we want to make sure that we impact all students and giving them the same opportunities that we have for maybe some of our students that are able to afford some of those additional test prep. Looking at additional supports and ways that we can change that data trajectory. So I think it's always good to get to the end of a presentation and have some recommendations. It's not going, Mr. Fritz. So looking at, you know, obviously, this was just an initial overview conducted to just have a conversation. What we would commit to is that we will have a deeper review of the data trends with our high school team coming and reporting on only, not only data, our ACT data, but matriculation data that they've been working through. And we would like to do that at the October 6th morning meeting. And then our recommendation, based on some of the information that we're seeing, we would like to recommend that we secure seats with torch prep for all high school seniors or junior, high school juniors. And to be able to do that, we spend about a little, close to $9,000 for the number of seats that we have now. It would be an additional $22,000 to secure seats for all of our high school juniors. And I fully support that recommendation from the high school team. They, they went through our decision-making framework and put it together for us for Mrs. Wagner and I. And we had a chance to speak with them and go through it. And again, we fully support that recommendation to look at that additional cost. We think that's a good expenditure to assist all of our students. And then certainly being able to continue to look at this information and provide additional intervention opportunities as we see needed in our normal school environment outside of torch prep. So happy to answer any questions. I know that was a lot of information, and I apologize that, you know, this was, this was kind of a late discussion that we had to just review some of this data. And I think it was important after we had that discussion at a previous board meeting to just relook at it, really make sure we're all talking about the same data and understanding the data, but making sure that our community is clear that we want to put a plan in place to, you know, address some of those concerns that we have.
Any questions from the board?
And would it be possible, when we look at the October, on the October 6th meeting, to look at comparable districts or peer districts versus just the state? And my second question is, any feedback or anything the state is doing? You're saying, if you're telling us that the national scores are not dropping, but we're seeing significant drops across the entire state of Ohio, what are we hearing from the state board of education? If you have to get back to me, that's funny.
See, Mrs. Wagner grabbing her microphone. So I'll let her talk first.
Thank you, Mr. Ballant, for that question. So specifically related to ACT from the state, we're not hearing much at this point in time. The reason for that drop is because the state of Ohio changed the law so that all students that are juniors in high school had to take the ACT. Other states did not have that law. Other states either still had an optional, or some had, there wasn't that significant change. So we're seeing that across the state, because now we're looking at two different pools of students. We're looking at pools of students who were- We're looking at pools of students who were self identified as college bound and were taking the ACT and that was reported. But now we've got all juniors, whether they plan to go to college or not, to looking at two different pools of students. So from the state specifically, we're not hearing a whole lot in terms of their concern about it. But there is a consortium, Ashley Warren and I taught have met and talked about going to give some professional learning from ACT specifically. That's another part of this plan that we want to put together to kind of dig in with college board and ACT to see how we can use that information to impact our source.
Yeah, I'll weigh in a little bit. Thank you for the presentation and bringing attention to something that's obviously very important. There's many reasons ACT is important. I know it's a test, I have a senior right now that is going through the retaking and dreads that, so. As many students do, but it is something that we do have to live with. And you know, it, when I think about the cost of college and what ACT does. One of the guaranteed ways of receiving scholarship money is that ACT score. And I've done some work on it, you know, those of us that have kids in college or are in the process of it know right now that. You know, starting at about a score of twenty four, every incremental point higher is about an additional thousand dollars per year. Also, you know, going from twenty four to thirty two, you know, significant amount of money. In fact, that's probably the average that kids graduate with indebtedness. So it would be nice to draw that focus. I agree with Mr. Ballant that, you know, comparing to the state of Ohio, and I know that's part of the ACT report and that's where that's pulled. But that's not really a benchmark for us, our benchmark districts, other college prep schools. And the universities themselves is also a good comparison. Because I think the rate of change that we're watching at the UCs and Ohio States and Miamis that a lot of our kids go to here in the state. Is moving up at a faster clip than ever before, I think. Ohio State's up to a thirty this year, yeah.
And from a twenty nine to a thirty?
Yeah, if you get on that NCD side, it's thirty, so. And I know that part of the focus and your follow up recommendation is to look at, you know, our matriculation data. In the in a decline to kind of make that assessment. So I would make that recommendation that you look at those schools as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Mercuria, thank you for that. The reason that we put the state data in there was really to provide context, not so much the comparison. Because I understand where you're coming from on that, it was just to provide context that this is is a trend that's seen across the state because of the changes that we made. But certainly, we will reach out to other districts to see if we can get that data from here.
And I think it's really important to point out, I'm glad you highlighted that twenty eighteen year. Because those first two years, this is an apples to oranges comparison. So I, you know, there's a lot of promise in the last three years and what I see in the developing track three points to get it. But you know, it is important to draw that distinction, so, yeah, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mercuria.
Yeah, I'm going to remember too with everything else, I think in the October meeting. In that matriculation, those matriculation slides would be worthwhile, because it kind of breaks. Question of what we were talking about. The other question is on the torch data. I know we talked about this in September eighteen, I think you and I were at a meeting of the high school on that. But we actually had this same discussion, same recommendation in the fall of eighteen, so we're kind of three years down the road. And honestly, we're back to the same recommendation. So I would just say, let's get some, we can get some traction on that, because, you know, I get a feeling we've sort of lost three years of doing that. I know that some things done, Mr. Major did talk about that, but back in eighteen, there was a discussion eighteen nineteen about getting a whole comprehensive plan for school. And, you know, three years later, we're still having the same discussion.
And and we're prepared to move forward with torch prep and bring a contract back to you at the next meeting for approval. So if 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 there's at least some agreement with the board that that would be of interest. And again, we both fully support it with Ms. Tompkins, we we all fully support moving forward. We could bring that contract for next meeting improvement. But we would like to be able to communicate with torch prep to say, hey, because right now it's critical. They start holding seats and providing, you know, so we're asking for our entire junior class to get seated in in the course. So if there's at least some commonality or agreement through the board, we'll go ahead and make those. Situations happen and put that in play and have you vote on it next week.
First of all, I agree with all the comments that have been made. I would also like to thank you for bringing this conversation into the board. I really appreciate it, I think it's an extremely important one. What what I would ask is, how does this relate to the curriculum audit work that we're doing? One of the things that I was particularly interested in when Mr. Major came and talked about this innovation lab. They highlighted specifics on what they saw in the test, ACT test scores that they thought they needed to address within this innovation lab. And I was, I'm hopeful that we can get some of that same type of detail and how it relates maybe to the the curriculum that that we have. Because the torch prep is a great option, but I think there's maybe a systemic look as well. And I was just curious how it related, how this analysis will relate to the curriculum audit.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Commerford. So our curriculum audit is being done K through twelve in our four core areas. And so what we're really doing is getting a lay of the land, what does the landscape look like from not only curriculum maps, but materials? The student learning experience, because you might have a really great guidance document, but what does that really look like in the classroom? So really getting that big overview of of K through twelve, those core areas. The point, what you're talking about really is how to put that into practice. So for example, if I'm at the high school and I'm in language arts, I'm going to be looking through that ACT data to see what types of questions were the ones that students either performed the best on or didn't perform the worst on. Really breaking apart what the specifics are and then aligning that to my curriculum and weaving those in, if you will, to that learning experience. And that is something that we we currently do on a regular basis, whether it's with air data, ACT data. So those kinds of conversations are already happening with this ACT data as well as our our air data. And so the curriculum audit will somehow inform that, because why get that alignment piece? But that practice of reviewing the data and weaving those pieces into our instruction, that's currently happening.
Thank you. And I would just, I think that, Mr. Commerford's comments is, you know, if we do the curriculum audit, I keep asking, I just wanted to understand if we're going to be able to assess a gap relative to. Here's where we are today, and here's what we're trying to get to, just making sure that that's always tied in as we do the presentations, not just the assessment of where we are. But you know, that gap to whatever within each curriculum, structural segment of what we're trying to get to.
Yes, Mr. Evans, thank you for that. Part of the work that we're going to be doing with education elements, they're going to be looking at all the data that we're collecting about our curriculum maps, our materials, alignment to standards, student experience, all those pieces. And they're also going to be looking at our data, I've shared with them our little report card data, our ACT data, our map data. And they're going to be making recommendations based on the data that they've collected and where we know we want to go. What are those priority areas in terms of the work that comes from this audit?
And that'll be tied into permanent district goals that we have?
Yes, sir.
Well, I agree with all of my colleagues sitting here. I have a couple of questions just about the self reporting scores of college bound students. And just kind of having kids who have gone through or are going through the college process to kind of understand how. Those scores that they're entering in overgrad are actually, how accurate those are. Not to say that anyone's trying to put in higher scores or lower scores, but just to make sure that those are a true reflection of how our students are doing. And I think that it's important to note that while we have seen in the last couple of years, especially with COVID coming year. There were a lot of universities who made testing, you know, submitting test scores optional. But I think as we understood from our counseling staff at the high school, as well as our principal at the high school. That, you know, there are still three things that colleges look at. They look at your your, the rigor of your course schedule, your GPA and your ACT. And I'm wondering if on the October morning meeting, I would like to hear from Mr. Mater and Mrs. Andy Kay about really understanding where they believe the trend is going for colleges. And is an ACT score going to actually be something as, not an extra thing, but it may be the thing that actually puts you over the edge if it's not a required element when you're applying to college? Just so that we can start thinking about what that's going to look like in the future. But I think going back to the point is, we as a board have to be very aware of how students are getting into college now. And we have to make sure that they are prepared. And so even if we desire a future where there's a more holistic look at students. We still know that there are those three things that, you know, kind of puts you in a bucket of being considered at a college or not. So I just want us to kind of look at that from a higher level as well. Because while we want to look to the future, we also have to be cognizant of what our students and families are going through now in terms of getting into college. So that's all.
And and Mr. Lewis, correct me, but I believe, Mrs. Weiss, regarding the self reporting in overgrad. That is, students are using overgrad to send their scores to different colleges. So that's the self reporter, they're not self reporting their actual scores. That college, what was the term that you had on there, Mr. Lewis?
College bound students?
Yeah, the college bound scores, so those are, they're not, the students aren't typing in, I got a twenty seven or I got a thirty two. Overgrad is used to pull those students' scores that are being sent to colleges. So that's how they're identified, if I'm right on that, am I right on that, Mr. Lewis?
I I don't know that I'm as informed about exactly how it is, but it was reported, it was self reported. So I'm assuming that you can't just self report any score you want. You have to have some verification or some documentation to support it from the ACT board, especially if you're sending it directly to colleges that are have every ability to verify your score, so.
I think it would also be interesting to note too, you know, how many colleges now, what percentage of colleges accept super scores? I think that's becoming much more common because colleges are realizing that, you know, a test day is just a test day. And one day you may do great in science, another day you may not, so why should you be penalized if you're not doing great? On every single subject area on the ACT in one testing day? So I think that that would be an interesting point to understand a little bit better. Thank you. All right, anything else on ACT data? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for that. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's agenda, I need a motion for the approval of the construction change directive for Sycamore Junior High Construction Projects.
So seconded.
Mr. Lovell, are you still there?
I am still here, yes. So just to give a rundown of this one, I know at the last meeting, the question was asked, are we done with remediation? So just want to clarify that this was already included in that conversation. So this is a change order for that temporary parking lot in front of the junior high. I do want you to know, though, another one will be coming your direction. We failed our proof roll at EH Green and the new bus parking, and so we're going to have to do some remediation there. We're working on two different options to hopefully decrease that cost.
All right, any questions from the board or comments? Mr. Mercuria, are you sure? You look like you want to say something.
No, I just, thank you, thank you for recalling that.
Yes.
I I understand how it goes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the role. Mr. Evans? Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Mercuria?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Commerfer?
Aye.
Motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of the change order for Sims Elementary Renovation Project, GMP number three.
I move? Second.
Great, so this one right here, just a few things to point out, the security gates in the cafeteria, that was an addition. We have a wall going up, but we wanted to be able to protect the backside of the cafeteria. The other thing that I want to point out here, others are standard, the replacing the existing window shades, that was an alternate. But as we're coming to a close of the construction project, looking at the contingency, what we wanted to do is we wanted to update all the shades in the building. So the way it stood was the new part of the building had brand new shades and we were putting up these old shades in the existing renovated spaces, which obviously didn't look great. And so because the contingency has been strong and we remain on budget and on time, we decided to move forward with replacing the existing window shades.
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the role. Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Commerfer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercuria?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes, I need a motion for the approval of transportation impractical.
So, seconded.
Now, I would just say, again, normal practice, you know, approving transportation impractical or deeming students transportation impractical to various schools that, again. For a multitude of six reasons that are listed on the agenda that we're unable to transport. I would point out that we have had a few more challenges to this than we've had in the past. We do have upcoming discussions about. I know you recall, we had a challenge at Seven Hills School. It was actually headed to a state meeting and now that parent has pulled out. And said, I'm just going to accept the payment, but the, there is another parent challenging at Seven Hills, so we may have to start the process back over. So if that happens, we are required to provide a bus for the rest until it's settled. And once you get started, it's pretty much for the year. And then we've had a challenge come from Summit Country Day this year, so. It's always interesting to me because, you know, each year has a new challenge and obviously different parents. So we try to do our best to respond and help inform them on the process. But I just wanted you to be aware that there's a couple of challenges coming forward that we'll deal with. And Mr. Lovell and I and Mr. Miller will work through that process.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Lewis, and I I have been addressed by several parents on these transportation and practices. Just want to confirm that this is an annual decision that we make, not a permanent decision that is made for these schools that we transport to. Just it's a, it's a decision we make each year, given the specific circumstances of that year.
It's it's reaffirmed every year because what you're doing is you're voting on the students. And, you know, we obviously look at the number of students from each school. The ridership has been low for a number of years, but we are able to reassess. Where there is a permanency to it is if it all, if it goes through a state hearing, it is permanent. So Summit Country Day is when we we went through the hearing process, the board affirmed our decision. So it is, it's not ever coming back. We don't have to accept another challenge on Summit Country Day, it is a permanent payment in lieu. I looked at Mrs. Weber because one of the things that I would tell you, Mrs. Weber and I have had some initial conversations. We're going to sit down with Mr. Lovell and Mr. Miller. The transportation in lieu of payment has gone more than double what we used to spend. So we need to reevaluate this year. You know, this year was not the year to reinstate a bunch of transportation because there is at least a state, if not a nationwide driver shortage. We're having difficulty even getting subs. Our normal sub pool is probably eight to ten, we're probably hovering around five right now on standby subs, so. But in the future, if we were to make that change, we are able to make decisions to reinstate transportation. If we believe that the cost or being the cost to be better to do so. So we're constantly evaluating this, but to your original point, it is an annual thing that we have to reapprove the students that are. Being able to receive the payment of transportation payment.
Just maybe to follow up, one of the trends that the parents were highlighting to me is it seems like we're increasing the number of of transportation impracticals. I do believe one of the factors was that we had social distancing requirements at least last year. Is that still in place for this year?
Somewhat, we've gone back to what I would consider a more regular transportation schedule or regular number of students on the bus within reason. You know, we're not packing three to a seat or anything like that, but. The increasing number is just, you know, we don't get to control the timeframes that the non public schools go to school. And what I would tell you. And what I would tell you is a lot of them don't like the service that we're able to provide, which is, you know, some of them are shuttle services that we, you know, we, we, because we're not running the bus. Let's say there's only 26 kids that go to a Seven Hills school. We don't run a direct route and go pick up all 26 kids and then take them directly to school. They have to come in on Sycamore school buses to where, you know, whatever fits their timeframe. So let's say they start at 7:45, they have to come in on our high school buses and get shuttled out of the high school to go to their school. And, you know, obviously you can get a more direct route by just driving them, taking the payment and driving them directly. So I would say that's the majority of the decision when people choose to take it. For us, it's just about, can we actually do it? Do we have the assets? Does it make cost sense to do it? And how many actual people are riding? So let's say out of 26 students, only two or three ride. It doesn't make much sense to spend a $60,000 bus. That's about what it costs to operate a bus on a route for a year. Doesn't make sense to spend that when you can spend, you know, a fraction of that to pay them to drive themselves.
So thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the questions.
All right, any other questions? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the personnel consent agenda. And that includes items 1A, B, C, 2C, 3D, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, and AA.
So moved.
Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. May I just confirm who seconded that?
I will. I can second.
Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. My apologies, we had, I skipped over superintendent other on the agenda. So, Mr. Lewis, I apologize. I'm keeping two sets of papers here for the addendum and the agenda. And I just passed over that. So let me turn it back to you for other.
It is completely okay. When you hear a list that has double A and double F and, you know, personnel consent, it gets you excited to get it approved. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments just about, you know, obviously this was the first week of school. Our first two days, and I just have to thank the board for your support, not only getting us to that point and, you know, working through a lot of tough decisions as a team. And as we talked about, we're all on the home team. And it's being a collaborator and being someone that, you know, appreciates collaboration from others. I just have to say thank you for, you know, all the support you've provided us this summer, engaging in our retreats and, you know, building that sense of home team together. But your, your decision-making was on display the first two days of school. Because those transition days, I have heard from staff, and we spent the better part of probably three to four hours touring the district as a flight team, and they're all shaking their heads over there. We really enjoyed it. We drove around as a team in the vans and just really spent time out with kids and teachers and staff. And what we heard was these days have been so phenomenal to build relationships with kids. We have been able to engage with kids. We've been able to get them in on a smaller scale. We didn't have as many crying students and just the anxiety of being in the back of a building. And so I just have to say thank you for that and thank you for your support of those days. I would tell you that there's likely a recommendation coming from our team. We're going to debrief that, but that that may be a permanent situation that we continue to go forward with because it was so engaging and so phenomenal for our students to be able to get that great start to the school year. Other, other than that, we, you know, we have a lot of events going on. It's that time of the year where things are happening. So it's nice to be out on the athletic fields and, you know, in theaters and seeing our kids perform again. It brings back that normalcy. So our, our marching band and our football team kick off their season Friday. Because, you know, to me, that's not only, you know, our home season anyway. So, you know, our football team's won and won, marching band's done a great job, our student section's been great. But, you know, there's nothing like being at home for the first time. And, you know, our somewhat renovated facility with new stands and, you know, students being able to be engaged in the game. So looking forward to seeing the marching band actually perform at halftime. So we got varsity soccer this week at Lakota versus Lakota West, we got volleyball versus Lakota West. And I believe on my schedule today is always, you know, a great one, tennis against that school up north that starts with an L. So. And then the last thing I just wanted to bring up for a quick, quick discussion was per our negotiated agreement with the union, today we need to get back with them. And I apologize for not getting it to you sooner and having this discussion. But we, we, we need to identify a team of five from the district to sit on a compensation committee that will be having some dialogue with them. And there are a number of things listed in the contract. There's probably, I think, nine to, nine to 12 things that are listed that we're charged with looking at. And the superintendent gets to appoint a team of five and so does SEA. So we have identified four of our five, and we wanted to leave a slot open to see if there was an interest of a board member in serving on that compensation committee. Based on the language in the contract, it looks as if the meetings will be quarterly. So just so that you would understand the commitment. So, Mrs. Weber, any other thoughts about that? Because I know you were heavily involved in the bargaining process.
The only thing I'd add is this would be to prepare us for our successor agreement, which this current contract extends through 2024. So you would be looking at a fairly potential lengthy commitment to be able to be on this committee. Probably won't start quite as soon as we had initially thought, given that we have this timeframe. So that would be something you may want to consider to issue, determine whether you'd like to, to be a part of this committee.
Hey.
Thank you.
Lewis?
No, that's it.
Okay. Under other Board of Education business, just a reminder, typically we have our board meetings every other, every, every two weeks. But for September, our evening board meeting will be moved to September 22nd because there was a conflict with the Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur. So our next meeting again will be on September 22nd. All right, I need.
If I could just add to it, also be at Mapledale. Again, we're going to continue having our evening meetings at Mapledale due to the construction. And just because of wanting to be able to have the opportunity for people to, as many people to attend as wish to attend.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. All right, I now need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, employment dismissal evaluation compensation discipline of a public employee, appointment of a public official or regulated individual in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, purchase of property, and in accordance with ORC 121.22G3, to confer with an attorney for the board concerning disputes involving the board that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
So moved. Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, please call the rolls. Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And we do intend that we will be coming back into public session after executive session for a vote. And so with that, I would like to thank everyone who was participating virtually and for those who attended in person. Thank you, and we will confer back after executive session. Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution reaffirming and or ratifying the actions of the superintendent pertaining to the use of face coverings.
A move. Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, can you please read the resolution? Yes. Whereas on March 9th, 2020, Governor Dewine declared a state of emergency in Ohio through Executive Order 2020-01D. And whereas on March 11th, 2020, the head of the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a global pandemic. And whereas in recent weeks, there has been a substantial increase in the number of COVID-19 infections in Hamilton County in the state of Ohio and across the United States. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, known as the CDC, and the Ohio Department of Health, known as ODH, have both recommended that public school districts require face coverings for students, employees, and other visitors while in school. And whereas at its public meeting held on August 4th, 2021, the board passed Resolution Number 21-240, authorizing the superintendent to institute face covering requirements and to direct the administration to finalize a recommendation to revise Board Policy EBEA use of face coverings. And whereas at its public meeting held on August 18th, 2021, the board adopted new Board Policy EBEA use of face coverings. And whereas Policy EBEA vests the superintendent with the authority during times of elevated communicable disease community spread to require students, employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors to wear appropriate face coverings while in school and/or while on school-provided transportation. And whereas pursuant to Policy EBEA, the superintendent has required students in grades pre-kindergarten through six to wear a face covering while in school buildings and on school-provided transportation. And whereas pursuant to Policy EBEA, the superintendent has enforced the CDC's February 1st, 2021 requirement for persons to wear masks while on conveyances and at transportation hubs, which mandates that students and employees must wear masks while on a school bus. And whereas pursuant to Policy EBEA, the superintendent has required employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors to wear face coverings while in school buildings and/or while on school-provided transportation. And whereas the board agrees with the aforementioned actions of the superintendent taken pursuant to the authority given to him by the board through Board Resolution Number 21-240, Board Policy EBEA, and pursuant to his authority as chief executive officer for the board. And whereas the board wishes to pass this resolution reaffirming and or ratifying the aforementioned actions taken by the superintendent. And now therefore, the Board of Education of the Sycamore Community School District hereby resolves as follows. Number one, the board reaffirms and or ratifies the actions of the superintendent to require all students, employees, and volunteers to wear face coverings while on a school bus or other district-provided motor vehicle. Pursuant to the CDC's February 1st, 2021 order, an exception to this requirement shall be that a school bus driver and/or employee shall not be required to wear a face covering if the driver or employee is the sole occupant of the school bus or other district motor vehicle. Number two, the board reaffirms and or ratifies the actions of the superintendent to require students in grades pre-kindergarten through six to wear masks while in school buildings with exceptions for situations outlined in Board Policy EBEA or for students granted an exemption by the superintendent or his designated. Number three, the board reaffirms and or ratifies the actions of the superintendent to require district employees, contractors, volunteers, and visitors to wear appropriate face coverings while in school buildings and/or while on school-provided transportation. Number four, the board reaffirms and or ratifies the actions of the superintendent to recommend but not require students in grades seven through 12 to wear appropriate face coverings while in school buildings. That concludes the reading of the resolution. Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Please call the roll. Mr. Ballack?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Comifer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just on, just on the comment section on that resolution. I'm in favor of what's in the resolution, but I'm sort of disappointed that this is the third time that we're reaffirming a set of policies and actions that the board has put in place. And we spent six to 10 hours of public discussion time on the subject. And now we're spending more time at board level because of complaint. I just hope that our legal counsel vigorously defends the process we've gone through, the detailed deliberation that we've had on the subject. Now again, we're trying to, you know, answer a complaint that's trying to usurp the authority of the board and of the superintendent. So I just hope that gets taken into account as you go forward in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye, motion passes. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution requesting assistance from the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund.
A move. Seconded.
Mrs. Weber, would you please read the resolution? Whereas the Sycamore Community School District Board of Education, known as the Board, is currently involved in litigation of statewide significance. And whereas the Board, Ohio School Board Association, OSBA, Legal Assistance Fund has been established for the purpose of providing financial assistance to member boards of education. And now therefore, the Board hereby resolves to request assistance from the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund for calendar year 2021 and authorizes the superintendent to complete the necessary application for assistance. Any questions or comments from the board?
I do. The, the resolution stated for year 2021. Or is that this entire calendar year or should it be 2122?
That would be for the calendar year. These are reaffirmed typically at our, our approval is made at the organizational meeting, which is on the calendar.
Okay, that's not two different years. You're talking, it's 2021 as the calendar year. I got it under seconded, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions from board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Resolution passes. I need, I now need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, employment dismissal evaluation compensation discipline of a public employee, appointment of a public official or regulated individual. And in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, purchase of property.
So moved. Seconded.
Mrs. Weber? Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
We do intend to have a vote after executive session, so we will be coming back into public session after that. Thank you for joining us. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll. Mr. Comifer?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballack?
Aye.
And Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else from the board? Mrs. Weber? Mr. Lewis? All right, it is now. Um, all right, it is 11, or I'm sorry, 10:39, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.